7:00 PM, so we'll call the special board of finance meeting to order. We'll begin with the call of the roll. Mr. Chamora?
Here.
Mr. Fortin?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Bernardi?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Bradrick?
Yeah.
Mrs. Woz?
Here.
This is Perkins Cutler.
Here.
Mr. Shad?
Here.
And myself, Michael Dari, the chairman is present. So we have a full board, so we can skip the seating of an alternate and move along to public comment instructions. Public comments will be taken under item number six after the presentation of the five-year capital plan and budgets for the Board of Education. If, in fact, you wish to make a comment, you can do that at any time by using your chat function. If you're using a phone, you'll have to hit star nine to give us the signal that you've raised your hand. And we wish that anyone who has joined us and is not speaking at the time, if you would mute yourself. And when you do speak, please identify yourself. Any questions?
I have none.
All right, hearing none, we will move on to item number five, new business, which is the item A, the Board of Education fiscal year 22 budget presentation. Janice Thurlow will handle that, and she has a slide presentation. Go ahead, Janice.
Hello, Victor.
Hey, Michael. I just want to preface it with what we'll be sharing with you tonight is our proposed 2122 education budget. We have been through an unprecedented, once-in-a-century event, which has been pretty much life-altering, especially for students and our children. You'll be hearing a lot about educational recovery and instructional acceleration, probably for the next couple of years. Janice has worked tirelessly in managing our budget throughout the year, and she's juggled Corona fire virus relief monies along with OMB monies, ESSER monies, which are elementary and secondary emergency relief funds, and there's been two versions of that so far. And we're fortunate in Woodstock in that Janice and Karen work hand-in-hand to ensure that we leverage every single dollar we are entitled to, and their creativity has helped keep our schools running safely throughout the year. The board and I feel that we must do all that we can to rise to the challenge that the pandemic has put before us. And what you will be hearing is what the board approved last Thursday. So I will hand it over to Janice Thurlow. Thank you.
Can you see the screen, the slideshow?
I can see it.
Okay. All right, so this is a picture of our wonderful playscape that we had that Crystal and several people worked very tirelessly on. It's always, always has people on it every time I see it. So it is a very beautiful thing that we have, beautiful addition that we have at our middle school. Um, okay. So the significant increases that we have, now you've already been shared the budget actual document sheets, and we just thought we would give an overview before and kind of describe what some of the issues are that we have with our budget. So this year, we have some high school tuition increases. Woodstock Academy did not increase their tuition, but there were more students than than last year in the program. So the high school tuition increased as well as we have a VOAG. We have people, students go to VOAG. We have students that go to QMC. So those increases, tuition population increased as well. Health insurance is always on the list of significant increases. We had initially budgeted for an eight and a half percent. We have projected eight and a half percent. They came down recently to a three and a half percent. What you have in the budget documents is the three and a half percent. So we were, I think last year, we had a had a sizable increase compared to what I was told when we first got here is the type of increases we would have. This year is back down to normal of a three and a half percent. As always, we have unions in our district, and the union contracts all have increases. So that is part of our our fact, our significant increase as well. Last year, at the end of the budget season, as we were tying, coming to the end, and we had COVID, we couldn't have a town meeting. It was decided that both sides, the town and the Board of Ed, were not going to go to the allowable. So at the end of that, that meant that we were going to take, the Board of Ed was taking a $282,000 cut to our our budget, which, you know, because of COVID, we were able to cut some of those areas. For example, subs, we were able to put a substantial amount of sub dollars into grants, plus the fact that since we're having virtual school, we're not paying subs to the magnitude that we have been in the past. So those were areas that we were able to cut to get down to this $282,000 budget revision. And however, next year, this whole plan of the the whole document is based on a full return of all our students. So we don't have that ability to use use the deduct the sub line dollars we have in it. And then we were able to, some of the supplies, we purchased different kinds of supplies this year, COVID-related supplies versus workbooks, again, because we were doing virtual, and we were able to use our iPads. So those are the things that we're going to need to purchase this year that we didn't need next year, that we didn't need to purchase this year. So the 282 was a fairly doable cut, but this budget has proposed that those cuts be returned back. Those items that we cut need to be put back into our budget. And also, prior to the end of the year, we had another discussion about our maintenance, our maintenance category. Some of the expenditures that we have in that category are items that could go under the non-lapsing account. So it was decided to cut 59,000 from those types of repairs. We're putting that back into the budget. Again, we don't, from year to year, we don't know what type of repairs we're going to have. So are these repairs going to be significant? And therefore, we're going to, we can put them in non-lapsing. But as of right now, we put just our normal routine repairs, which don't rise to a level of being able to go under the non-reoccurring. So we put that back in the budget for now. The next slide is we report to the state every year. The state takes our data, and they come up with the compilation of what our per pupil expenditure is. And as you see, our total district, we spend 13,621,000 on on our students. The national, the state average is 15,622. This is a good thing and a bad thing. We are, you know, we we think we spend what we should be spending. It would be nice if we could spend the state average, which is 15,000, but we do a lot, and we have a long history of making the best use of the dollars that we have in our budget. So every year, most of the, most of the time, the increases are also based on on staffing increases because staffing is about 80% of our budget. So we only have, in this budget, we have an intervention teacher at the middle school and two pair of professionals. Those are the only two staffing increases that we have in our budget. And that's a total of 88,106. So we'll go through, basically, the the slide presentation kind of works through the budget actual sheets. So Woodstock Academy, again, a major portion of our budget, it's $6 million of our budget. So our regular education, as I mentioned before, the regular education tuition increased over last year in the amount of 76,250, basically five students. It's actually one student that moved, one student above last year that moved in. You have a seniors leave, freshman come, people move in, people move out. So the net effect of that was one student. But we have the difference of four students of the prior year where we had special ed students that reduced this year, so that made them in the into the category of regular education. So the total of those are five students of the total of increase for just Woodstock Academy is 76,250. And the regular education enrollment at the academy is 422 students. The next category, which we have a sheet that breaks down the expenditures also, but I'm just going to highlight the the major drivers of the budget increase in the elementary school. We are in our second year of completing the reading program, purchasing of the textbooks and the manipulatives and the training that goes along with a new textbook series. That's 48,665. We have the union contractual increases of 26,803. And like I explained before, we didn't have to purchase a lot of the supplies, or the supplies that we purchased were geared toward COVID, and I was able to write them into several grants that we thankfully have been able to utilize. So those supplies need to be replenished, and that's 14,340. And there's a request for some professional development for all the staff at $10,000. So that's part of the drivers for the 109,032, 109, yeah, 109,032,000 increase for the elementary school. The middle school, this is where we have the contractual salary increase of 76,832. We have the, this is where we have the additional teacher, the intervention teacher at 52,000. I budgeted a master's, not three. I don't know what we're going to hire, but typically, when you're have an open position, you you pick a dollar amount where you think you're going to be hiring the person at. In last year's budget, which we cut, which will go into this year's budget, are some musical instruments that were needing to be purchased at 11,040. And again, like in the elementary school, the supplies and the textbooks, and these textbooks, these textbooks for the middle school are basically your manipulatives. They're the workbooks and as such that you have to purchase every year for the middle school. So those two, the supplies are 34,906, and the textbooks are 18,804. So which are the drivers for the Woodstock, the middle school at 182,519. Excuse me. Trent, missed one. Okay. Special education. Again, we have teachers in that as well as paras. There's a contractual increase of 76,761. Transportation, I break transportation out into special education. Obviously, you know, again, because it is specifically for special education individuals, we use several sources. We use Datto, East Con, and Signature as our transportation companies to transport our students to our outplacement areas. Supplies, again, the same scenario as the other two, $16,024, and professional development of $1,700, which is the driver, driving force for the increase in special education of 278,564. Outplaced tuition, I forgot to mention, is another another issue as well. We have students that come in and out of the district, and their placements, their placements are changed. Sometimes they they maintain the same. Sometimes they they are changed depending on the IEPs and depending on the needs of the student. And they're also, the locations where they go, they also are projecting increases in their tuition as well. So we have to pass, add those to our budget. Health insurance, the other big driver to our to our to our increase that we have proposed. As I mentioned before, we have a 3.5% increase because we're involved in the Connecticut Partnership Plan. We have the, last year and follows through, they made a resolution that we regionalize the cost of of medical expenses. Therefore, they regionalize the cost of the premium. So we benefit by that regionalization because we don't have to pay the same type of dollar that something that someone like Bridgeport was. So they 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 use that in how they calculate what our premiums are. So our premiums are different than if you were in Danbury or Bridgeport. This year is, the budget does include this 234,000 increase in our health insurance is also taking into consideration 162,000 roughly. There's, it's, you know, a few dollars behind that to close out the internal service fund that the auditors are wanting us to do. They gave us an extension two years ago. They allowed us to take that and close that fund over two years. And this year, it's roughly 162,000. It, between Karen and I, we'll figure out what the exact dollar amount is, and that will close out that fund. So that $234,000 increase could have been $162,000 higher. The reason for a lot of our insurance increase, other than the premium, is we've had a lot of new participants in our plan than in previous years, namely because some of our employees, their spouses have lost their jobs, so they're coming on our plan. The children are coming on our plan. If a spouse lost his or her job, and they had the children before, the children are now coming on our plan. And we have a few teachers that up for a couple of years were on their parents' plan because of the age 26. Once they reached 26, they then had to get their own insurance, which is, of course, ours. So we had a couple of our younger teachers that came on our plan as well. So that's, those are significant factors in our health insurance increase. As I mentioned before, Datto is, the contract ends on June 30. We're in the process of negotiation with Datto. So I'm not budgeting a fairly large increase because I don't want to say to Datto, oh, look, we've budgeted for a 3% increase, and that's what they're going to give us an increase. What this increase is, is basically the $100,000 that we are losing in our vehicle credit. So and other factors, this is a whole, this is what we pay for Datto for regular ed students with gross of the $100,000 vehicle credit that we've had in the past. So again, we could negotiate something different, but as of right now, I really had to go based on our actual expenditures minus the credit, the double negative. So and maintenance, as I, as I said before, maintenance was one where we had cut the $55,000 from. So contractual increases, we do have a union in that in that group, and that's 14,774. Repairs and maintenance and supplies increase over last year is 82,245, and supplies are 14,500 for a total increase of 113,000. This is like your summary sheet, that part of the budget. On the other, the other sheet, this is part of your summary sheet of all of the different categories. As I mentioned tuition in the previous slide, beside the the Woodstock Academy tuition, we have VOAG and QMC and Putnam. So those are year over year. So we have increases in students that are attending as as well as an estimated tuition increase for those particular schools. We talked about the special education. We talked about elementary school and middle school, the drivers in in those categories. We talked about the benefits. The other thing we didn't necessarily have a slide for is the district-wide supports. And again, the increase on this, well, this one as well, is the cut that we had at the end of the school year or at the end of the budget year. Items in that category are copy cost, how many, what we pay for the copy machines and the paper that we use and the printing that we use of that. Obviously, in a virtual year, we're not spending a lot of money in copying. So that was one of the areas where we cut. I have to go back to a a more realistic year because children will be back. So I, that is an is an increase in that category as well. The audit, we agreed to a new contract with the audit, so there's a slight increase in the audit fees. And our technical and legal, there's an increase in those fees as well. So that brings the that that are the drivers for the district-wide support. And then transportation and maintenance, we talked about. So that's really, and we're requesting right now 1.4, 1.5 million dollar increase, and that's a 7.77% increase over last year. The last slide is basically the town meetings, the dates of the of the town meetings. So I don't, you know, I'm kind of going, giving a summarization of those individual budget sheets, but I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point that want to talk about the individual budgets or the summary sheets that that I presented in the slideshow.
Okay, I'll bite.
Go ahead, David.
Where can I find any amounts of monies that have been sent to the towns in COVID release or funds?
That are what?
Anything that was sent to the town to support the school budget last year for COVID funding? Can I find it?
That's a reimbursable, so I don't have it in here as revenue, nor do I have it as expense. I can get that number for you. It's multiple grants, so it's a total of many grants that we've spent since March of last year, March of 2020. So, for example, we had 128,000 worth of ESSER funds. We used those funds to make the first payment of the iPads, and we also purchased some software that went with the iPads. So that 128 was was spent. We had probably about $40,000, little more than 40,000 worth of expenses that went through the town's FEMA slash CRF funds. We had another 298,000 of CRF funds for education. I'm in the process of writing the third reimbursement request for those funds, which covered a lot of salaries. We had some additional hours for our paras to work so that we could keep the children at six feet apart, and so we needed more actual time that paras worked. So that additional time was covered under the grant. We had some virtual teachers. We had some technology, additional technology stipends that we gave so that teachers could help teachers in their virtual slash in-person training. So that's about 298,000. We had some relief in cafeteria funds because we have the grab and go. So there was some, we had to report how many meals we sold, and they reimbursed us based on that. So it's it's a total of a lot that I can actually get for you if you if you would like that detail. But that's separate from from this. So these, those supplies, we're not going to need to purchase next year. Yes, we'll probably need to supply face masks and things like that. But I'm also in the process of writing the grant for ESSER2. And there's also the recovery money that that is also just been signed by the president, which some of those expenses, again, will go toward into that grant, which could cover some of these expenses. Though those details have yet to be determined as to what we can spend with that. But I'm working on the ESSER2, which is roughly 500, a little over $500,000 grant for that, of which we're hiring a social worker and a few other additional support kind of personnel for our for our students when they come back to help them. I don't want to say catch up because that's not really, but to help them transition back from a virtual setting to now back in the classroom again.
Y'all set there, David?
Yeah, Janice, I appreciate that. And perhaps not even in the vein of, you know, your budget request this year, but it's more about gaining an understanding of of the funding of the schools. So I appreciate that explanation, and I'll I'll take any information you have, and I thank you very much.
All right, does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Chamora?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
I'm all set for now.
Mr. Bernardi?
There we go. Figuring this out here. Insurance, so there's a 200, what was it, $34,000 in increase? Then that's less than 162,000 from the leftover insurance fund? So there was a, there was a total increase this year of insurance of almost $400,000?
Right.
What was the increase last year, insurance-wise? You know, on top of your head? I know you don't.
Not on the top of my head, I don't.
No, all right. Okay. So there was a total increase in insurance of $400,000 this year. That's, thank you.
Mr. Bradrick?
Are we going to hear about the five-year capital plan later, or should I address some of that now?
That will be following the question period here on the budget.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions on the budget?
No, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Woz?
No questions.
Mrs. Perkins Cutler?
No, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Shad?
Nothing, nothing from me.
All right, then I guess we will move on to the five-year capital plan presentation.
And while I get that.
Anytime, Janice, you're going to give that as well?
Yes, I'm going to share that as well. You have a copy of it, but I can share it for anybody else that that may not have a copy of it. So let me grab it up.
Okay, go. Okay, don't.
Okay, can you see it?
I can see it.
I can.
Okay. So we'll go through the items on that, a technology that's been historically on there. We we spend about thirty thousand dollars. On technology every year. Or we're estimating that we do. Sometimes it's less than that. We mostly pull it from our non lapsing kind of when we pull it. When we spend it, we actually ask through non lapsing. So it's roughly thirty thousand a year. Um, the Woodstock education funding. Capital items funded through the Woodstock Academy. I don't want to call it the word that we've used to been calling it, but every year they do have. Projected for us, and we did request this year for them to. Tell us what part of their budget. They were going to use for capital projects. They just responded to us yesterday or Friday. And their budget of their tuition amount, four hundred and ninety three dollars. Per student is going to be for capital projects. And they're saying this year. Excuse me, the. They're going to use that money for the significant remodel of the academy building. Which I understand they have received grants for, and they're going to use four hundred and ninety three dollars per student. For to also go toward the. The remodeling of the academy building. I will go through the rest of them and then we can ask questions. Repaving between the brick building, we've done a portion, a small portion of that. The rest of the, another portion of it needs to be, needs to be repaved. We have drainage into, and you go to drainage and then further down encapsulating the crawl space. Kind of one in the same, the drainage around the building drains kind of forces. The water to leach into that. Crawl space that's in one section of our building. We do. Truly need to incorporate encapsulate that area. Or find some other solution, drainage or something because. New to this year are flooring and ceiling repairs. We put a ten thousand dollars in there this year because we have had some tiles. That we feel are directly related to the. The, the, the. Water condensation from the below. Tunnel between the building. So we've added ten thousand dollars for some floor ceiling repairs. Because it's it's getting to the point where we're going to need to do something with that that crawl space area. The generator, we really feel we need to go forward with that one this year. Because multiple times the power has gone out at the elementary school. And has caused an issue with something. When it comes back on again. One of the things which is the intercom system in there at twenty nine thousand, it has been something that we wanted to do if we had money. But we now have to move it to the current year. And we have a price quote of twenty nine thousand for a portion of the. Of the intercom system. Because that's another one twice this year, when the power came back on. It caused one of the components of the intercom system to fry. So we really do need to. Install a generator at the elementary school. Because we don't have those kinds of issues at the middle school. The middle school has a generator. So we don't have that kind of issue. When the power goes off, the generator goes on and we're maintaining. A solid current into the building. So. We're estimating that to be at a hundred and five thousand dollars. We did a good job. Our custodians did a good job painting the fence around the. Closet school. So. We're holding off on replacing the actual fencing. Because they did such a good job, we can hold off on that. There's also a garage many years ago, the the elementary school had its own garage, much like the middle school. That was torn down because it was deteriorating and it it has not been replaced. And that's been on there since two thousand eight nine. So at some point. We should replace that. And the leaching system, what we call Mount Mount Flushmore. That section in the back of the school that when you drive in that mound that's on the left hand side of of the driveway. Where the old septic tank leaching field was. Where there's a been a proposal for several years to take that mound down, take out the the. Leaching system, take out the tanks and push over all of that so that we can actually expand the parking. So that maybe the buses can park on the, we wouldn't pave it. Maybe the buses could park in that area and therefore we would have more more parking. And hopefully alleviate some of our pickup and drop off issues that we have with traffic. So we're estimating that at a hundred and nineteen. The walk in freezer and the vestibules, those have been on for multiple years too. The vestibules help with the wind in the sections of the kindergarten sections of the building. Where the doors just enter right into the building on cold days that just. Brings the the cold air right into the building and all the way down the hall. So if we. Created a vestibule that would eliminate that, much like the main doors have those vestibules. And that's helped in that area as well. As I mentioned, the brick, the floor. Repairs and also where the water is coming down and hitting the pavement near the near the drain spouts or or. It's kind of splashing back onto the brick part of the building. And the bricks are kind of deteriorating. We had a mason in there, looked at it. And they're saying rather than replace the bricks because it's only going to happen again, maybe if we put. Stucco or some kind of cement in that area. It would be better than if we replaced or repointed those 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 bricks. So that's for the elementary school. And as I said, the encapsulation of the spot of the crawl space. We have no idea what that's going to cost. It's going to be a lot of manual labor because you can't get any equipment down there. So we're throwing that over three years, but it it may be more more costly than we think. The element, the middle school, we need to replace the lockers, but it's not, it's not a critical thing. The lockers that we have now are just too small for our books. They're not wide enough. So we need to create, need to have different sized lockers. But again, it's not critical. The parking lot, if you've driven into the parking lot at the middle school, it has a lot of cracks or it's a lot of sections, you know, where we added to the parking lot. So there needs to be either some good. I forget what you call it, but when you connect. Connect the parking lots or the seam in between and you kind of seal it. That kind of work needs to be done as well as it would be great if we could replace the whole, the whole parking lot, but. We're going to need to do some sort of of sealing cracks and stuff in the near future. The intercom system at the middle school is also in need of replacement. We, the carpets, there's carpets in the music room and carpets in the media center. During COVID, we had people in here professionally cleaning those carpets. And it did wonders for those carpets. Up until that point, they looked like they just needed to be replaced. They did a really good steam clean job on those. So we're going to stretch them out, stretch out that project in the in a future year. Repairs of the maintenance garage, it's highlighted in yellow because we initially had. The initial proposal we sent out to you was about twenty five thousand dollars. They weren't sure what it was going to cost. So we had some. Wood products, people look at our our proposal. And it's really the the siding and maybe a lean to that needs to be attached to that. To that building. So. Doing some quoting of the products that we need because the building itself is structurally sound. It's just the siding. That needs to be replaced and hopefully we can get a donation on that one. So we're estimating that's going to be about seventy five hundred dollars. The HVAC system, the boiler. In the middle school has, it's newer than the elementary school. The problem with the newer system is it has a lot of electronics. So when something goes out, it's an electronic issue. And they don't make those things anymore. So we're down for a few weeks with something that. Because they have to re. Recondition something that we have that that broke down. So this is a one point three million dollar project, probably to completely change. The boiler system in the middle school. The the elementary school, yes, that's failing as well, but it's still an old system of of steam pipes and water. It's a little bit easier when when that. When that breaks down, it's a little easier and less costly costly to repair. This may, of course, be something like our roofs where we may end up having to do a a major. A major renovation request. So we're putting it on here because it's it's. You know, we just spent the last two, three months with. With parts of the system being down. And every time they fix this one, another section would would break because. You know, that section was down for a while. It's like when you're heating old pipes, the further you go down the line, it it kind of has issues. So. This is basically putting everyone on notice that we're probably going to have to do something with our HVAC boiler system in the middle school. Sometime in the future. The athletic field, we sometimes can't play soccer on the field that's behind our building. Because it's very wet. There is drainage in there. But it's, it's, it's just a very wet area. So we're going to have to do something to that so that it can be playable. Otherwise, we're we're going either requesting. The academy use their field or having to do an away game. So. That and the softball field, apparently there are sections of the softball field. Where the drainage that we put in that area, the the filter fabric that was put down. Is is exposed. So we constantly have to fill it up and it erodes and we have to put more. Soil on there. So there needs to be some repairs on on the softball field as well. Um, I talked about the media center carpets. And the AC for grade six and the great AC for grades five. Could be rolled into the HVAC system if we did a system that included. Air conditioning as well. So those are projects that. It would be nice that the seventh and eighth grade has has those Mississippia units, but the other floors. Could also have that, but we could, we could work that into the HVAC system. So the total for all five years is three million, six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty one. Any questions?
All right, we might as well start off with Mr. Chamora. Do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Forten?
Yeah, I do have one. The. Row six on your spreadsheet, Woodstock Education Funding was formerly known as the. Woodstock Academy Capital Assessment Charge. Why did we change the name on this? Because it seemed to me that. That name was pretty straightforward. I'm not being critical here. I'm just trying to understand why we would change that.
The academy isn't necessarily calling it assessment like they did the first two years of 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 that. They're just now calling it a. You know, projects that they're going to do every year. So I. I came up with education funding. It could be. You know, it it could be called something else.
I would give. I would give some consideration to that, Janice, because this looks like it. And I know this is not your intention. I want to make that clear to you. It looks like it could be a slush fund for. Things that should be funded within the budget but are not. Or will we be requesting capital funding for? As I said. I want to be clear. I'm not accusing you of anything. I'm just saying, I don't think it's clear. And if this is for the. Capital assessment funding, I would prefer the name represent what it's for.
I clearly understand, yeah. You know, you look at something a different way. Each person looks at things differently. So I I appreciate your comments on that. Thank you.
And thank you too.
Mr. Kelleher?
I'm all set for now. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Bernardi?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Bradrick?
I echo Mr. Forten's concerns, the term Woodstock Education Funding. If it's that moniker, I think it belongs in your budget. Actually, I think it belongs in your budget anyway. Because it seems that there is a possibility this will come out of capital non recurring yet again. Our third year of a non recurring event that is projected to occur another five years. So I think to put this in the proper place, it should not be on the capital side. I think it rather belongs in your regular budget.
All right, Mrs. Waz?
And I guess I have a comment more than a question. And I guess I continue, and this actually has nothing to do with us or the Board of Education. But I continue to be frustrated by the fact that we have. State statute that allows. The academy to apply for grant funding from the state if it would allow the proper board representation, town representation on its board. And it frustrates me that. That doesn't seem to be a big hurdle for us to get over. And I don't mean from our part, I mean together as a team teaming with them. And it just seems to me like we're leaving money on the table in certain instances. And there's any way we could get past that. I think that would be a benefit for for all of us.
Okay, Mrs. Perkins Cutler? Charlie?
Okay, I I agree with what Dave and Roy have said. I I'm concerned about the way this is listed and. And I think that. Well, I still have a problem with us. Paying for improvements to their property when. Not all of their property is used for the education of our students. And I have lots of questions regarding that. But in terms of the way it's presented. This year, I would like to see that the moniker changed and. I mean, it should be called what it what. It is, and perhaps it should be in the regular budget. So.
Mr. Shad? Mr. Shad.
Uh, I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay, well, uh, I, I would tend to agree with, uh, both Mr. Bradrick, Mr. Forten, and, uh, Ms. Cutler. Uh, I mean, this, this is something that, that we've been battling for, uh, last couple of years. And I think it's, it's got to come to a head. Unfortunately, we're all in tough situation right now because of, uh, this COVID and, and the way the economy, uh, is and the restrictions that we have, but, uh, uh, there are certain things that need to be done. And, uh, one of the ones that is of, uh, great concern to me, and it has been actually, uh, going back many years, uh, is that, uh, the replacement of that generator at the, uh, elementary school. I believe the old generator is still sitting there. Uh, at least last, the last time I was in that basement, it was there. And, uh, that generator, uh, even if it could be repaired, I wouldn't attempt to run my house on it. But, uh, that's, that's all I have to say right now.
It's still there, Michael. So if you'd like us to drop it off at your house, we can arrange that.
Uh, my lake is not that big. I don't need an anchor that size.
Mike, if I could just pipe in for one more second.
Go ahead, David.
So going back to the Woodstock Education, uh, funding line, um, I think it's important to note that although that we've, um, uh, been able to fund the academy, uh, assess, uh, capital assessment charge from capital funding from the town. Um, we can't do that forever. However, if the capital assessment is itemized year over year, it becomes a different project. And we can do something with it. And since we don't have a projection, or I'm unaware, excuse me, I'm unaware of a projection beyond this year, and I haven't seen this year's letter. Uh, we should probably think about removing all the years of projected costs that, uh, we have not been charged or billed for, if you will. So if we have a letter, the Board of Ed has a letter for the years 2021, 2022, 22, 23, and an itemized list of what that's for, I think the Board of Finance needs that information. And all the other years that does not have an itemized list of what these capital assessment charges are for should probably be removed. So that's my opinion.
That is a good point, Dave. Thank you. That's, that's very important.
I, uh, I agree with that as well, uh, but I, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Victor. Uh, but I believe those numbers that are in for, uh, 20, 21, 2022 through 2025, 2026 are based on their, uh, current newest project that they're working on? Is that where those numbers were derived from?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, uh, we, we've gotten an itemized list for this year, but you know, we haven't gotten them for the upcoming year. So if you want to do it budget by budget, we could do it that way as well. So I don't know which way is the right or wrong way, but we just felt that was important that we put it out there so you can see it moving out into the future.
Yeah, if I could jump in here for a minute, and that's, and that's great, Victor, and I appreciate that. Uh, but, um, capital funding can't be used year over year for the same capital project. After about three years, I'm wrong, Karen can pipe in here. But I believe it's about three years and it can't be used. However, if the amounts are itemized and the projects are itemized, it can continue to be used. So I just thought I would bring that up.
Karen?
Yes.
Uh, do you have any, uh, anything from the, possibly from the, uh, uh, auditors or anything as to what a, what a, what a limit is on, uh, a said project?
Um, well, normally a recurring, um, project would be something more than three continuous years. Um, when we went out for the, um, legal opinion and audit opinion based on the last capital assessment with the academy, I mean, it was presented to us as one specific project. So, um, agreeing, agreeing with Dave, um, if there was a specific project that they presented to us as a capital project, we would most likely be able to utilize those funds, but if they're just going to charge us every year within the tuition, $493 a student and, you know, separate it out as capital assessment, it's, it's really not a project. I mean, that, that's how I would see it as well. Um, on, on the legal standpoint, you know, from basically what we've heard from our attorneys in the past was basically that because it serves as a public function for the town, those CNR funds can be used for their capital projects.
All right, anyone else?
Yes, Janet, um, you said, I may have misunderstood, um, that you just got the letter today from the academy saying what the capital, um, assessment is?
We, we received it on Friday.
Friday, okay. So is that built into their tuition and you separated it out or did, is the tuition letter one item and this is a separate item?
Um, they kind of talk about it being, um, that it's, they said the capital, that as detailed in the enclosed copy, they have a pie chart that shows where all of the expenses are going, percentage of expenses, much like I have in the summary sheet. And the paragraph that they talk about was, uh, about the capital projects is that the capital projects portion of the tuition of the tuition rate will be used for our significant remodel of the academy building. So, and that's what they said, $493 of that would be used for the significant remodel of the academy building. I don't know how much that, so we have not had a chance to ask for further clarification. Like you said, how many years are they anticipating? You know, what's the dollar amount of the capital uh, of the remodel for the academy building that we can anticipate that this money is going to be for how many years? Or is next year going to be a different capital item? We, we haven't gone further than, than this letter yet.
It just seems to me that it's becoming more blurred into their tuition and just becoming a part of their amount they're charging us now as opposed to originally where they talked about this particular projects they were going to do. It seems to have morphed into something ongoing. And that concerns me as funding it the way we've been funding in the past.
Um, can I chime in for a minute?
Sure.
Um, I, I too, I, I do share a concern as well. I mean, um, you know, for the town of Woodstock, we always think that we have, you know, a significant hefty fund balance. Um, and normally it's, you know, somewhere around 3.4, 3.5 million. Um, the letter that I had last seen about a year or so ago from the academy stated that was an estimated 4.9 million to renovate that, um, academy building. So, you know, depending on Woodstock having the highest amount of students, what I'm afraid of is that we're going to be neglectful to our own infrastructure. Um, by constantly, you know, putting out or dipping into the general fund to fund their projects. I, I do understand. And I am in agreement that, you know, they do serve the public function for the town as our high school and these kids need to be going to school in safe buildings. But I, I really think that, you know, the academy, like the town, should either have to go for bonding or, you know, some other type of financing than just constantly depending on us to cover their expenditures.
Right, Mike, can I just?
It, what it's going to come down to is we're going to have to take a stand one way or another. And it's going to get to a point where we're just going to have to say no. Uh, when that's going to be, I don't know. But I would say, uh, based on, uh, the last couple of years and what the uh, projected future is with the project, uh, with redoing uh, that old building and even unknown costs that they haven't even come across yet in working on a building of that type uh, with its age. Uh, you know, we could be on the hook from here to eternity. So, uh, something has to be done. Michelle? Michelle, go ahead.
Well, I mean, that's kind of what, I know we didn't, we're not in a position to do anything about this, but that's kind of why I express my frustration about, you know, we, we need to get to a point where they are teaming with us to find resolution to this. I mean, we have a state statute that says if you give us board representation, it's not even majority board representation. We can, we can get funding from the state for our construction projects for, through, through grants. Like, there's got to be a point where we say, okay, enough is enough. We have to look at all of our, our alternatives.
Agreed. Charlene?
I just want to ask a quick question here. Um, Janice, on the, um, the summary page that you gave us for tuition for the high schools, the amount proposed for the tuition for Woodstock Academy, $6,435,500. Did that include this $493 per student assessment? It did not. Okay.
Sorry, I was on mute. No, it does not.
Sir? You're, you're muted if you're recognizing me.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Bradrick.
Um, the issue with, well, there's many issues. One, we have no control over what they decide is a capital project. We have no control over what they choose to assess. And, uh, my other concern is by constantly categorizing this as a capital non-recurring expense and dipping into our capital funds, uh, when it should be something else, we are subverting and violating at least the spirit of Prop 46, which limits what we should be doing. So it's a backdoor uh, avenue to funds, yes, but, uh, I think we have to remember there is a Prop 46, whether we like it or not. And to constantly evade the spirit of the law, if not the letter, is not a good thing that the board should be doing. End of rant.
All right, if no one else from the board has, uh, any questions, uh, we'll move on to public comment. Anthony, do we have anybody, uh, who has, uh, typed in any, uh, comments or anybody, uh, signaling you with a star nine?
I do not see anybody with their hand raised and nothing in the comments right now.
All right. Then we will move on to those that we have on screen here. Anyone have a comment?
I have none.
Charlene?
Um, a, a question, um, for Karen. Would it be possible that we could get a list of all of the COVID funding uh, grants applied for and grant and funds received and the purposes for which they were used? Not just for the Board of Ed, just for everything?
Um, yes, we could do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing that, we will move on to the next item. Other from the board? Anyone have anything that they want to throw out there? Nope. All right, we will move on to correspondence and announcements. Uh, I believe you all should have received the, uh, copy of the letter from, uh, uh, Selectman Klein. I forwarded to you all. I see you shaking your head, so I assume you all got it. Okay. Uh, next, uh, item under correspondence is, uh, the call for a public hearing. So I will read that. It will be, uh, put into the newspapers. Uh, we will read it again at our next meeting. But, uh, just for the, uh, sake of legality, I will read it. Uh, Town of Woodstock Notice Public Hearing, April 6th, 2021, 7:00 PM at the Woodstock Middle School. The Board of Finance, Town of Woodstock, will hold a hybrid public hearing at the Woodstock Middle School on Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. In accordance with Section 7-344 of the Connecticut General Statutes, itemized estimates of expenditures of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education will be presented. And the Board of Finance will hear all persons who wish to be heard in regards to any appropriation which they are desirous that the Board of Finance shall recommend or reject for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, dated Woodstock, Connecticut, the 16th day of March, 2021, and signed by Michael Dougherty, Chairman of Board of Finance. Any of those that, uh, cannot make this meeting, it will be available on Zoom. And, uh, they'll be able to join us in that regard. Any questions on that?
Hey, Mike, I got one, one question. When will we have the Prop 46, uh, calculation?
But the, uh, calculation, we will have the final calculation, I believe. I don't know if it will be approved by the attorney yet. Uh, Karen?
Um, I plan on submitting it tomorrow to the attorney for his blessing and then it will be ready for your, uh, March 23rd meeting.
Okay, so we should have the final number, uh, at our next meeting, one week from tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, just, uh, for your information, uh, Karen, has there been any change?
Um, well, I, the only changes that can be made is if something with either increasing grants and stuff like that or increase in special ed and transportation, which at this point, um, Janice hasn't provided me with any updates. So, um, the revenue, which I'm going to be working on hopefully tomorrow, um, Linda gave me some updates the other day. Um, looking at some of those things, I might be able to increase some of the overage of what she's collected based on what we budgeted this current year, which could possibly help increase in the revenue. But, um, as of last week, when I presented you with the preliminary revenues, I have not, um, worked on that. I'm hoping to get all that done, like I said, tomorrow, so then I can do the Prop 46 calculation and send it to the attorney.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, under other announcements, uh, what I have is, uh, next Tuesday night, uh, the 23rd, we will have the, uh, combined budgets presentations and the, uh, revenues as well as the, uh, Prop 46 calculation. At this time, we are scheduled for the public hearing on April the 6th at, uh, 7:00 PM at the Woodstock Middle School. And, uh, the next thing after that will be our, uh, final budget termination, uh, which will take which will take place on the 13th of April. From there, we'll move to the town meeting, which we hope to, by that time, be more open. If not, we'll have to address that, same as the public hearing. And then the referendum will follow on the 11th of May. And that is all I have for tonight. So if someone would care to make a motion to adjourn?
I would still move.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Forten. Do we have a second?
All right, go ahead.
And we have a second from Mr. Chamor. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, posed. Motion carries. Everyone have a good night and